The time back. Yeah, well, that's my worry. I was thinking, man, do we leave zoom open? But boy, if we ever screwed up and had a hot mic during an executive, that's just not good. So you mean policy just probably just off zoom every time. Are people still filing in? Okay, we'll continue to wait, make sure everybody can get back on that wants back on. Are we close? Yeah. Alrighty, I guess we will start. Hopefully, everybody's back in that wanted back in. Next item on our agenda is continued discussion regarding the interagency agreement amongst the Washington State Energy Site Evaluation Council and FSEC and Clickit County for the purpose of providing reimbursement to the county for staff time. With that, I will open the discussion to my seatmates.
So as I remember it, this is a week ago, but Commissioner Christopher said that he cannot support it because of certain language that was with that was in it. I wanted to make sure that I never saw anything that was the concerning language that Commissioner Christopher had. I wanted to ask and see if he had clarification. From what I had read, I didn't see how it binded us to anything, but Commissioner Christopher did bring up a couple of concerns that I wanted to make sure that we're we were able to address. And I know our planning director isn't here. Who is kind of spearheading that. But in all in all, it's just a reimbursement agreement that I think would be good for us to have with the rest of this project moving forward, especially if they they have to go through the long process and we have a lot of things to comment on.
Are you saying that the planning director was spearheading this reimbursement agreement?
I think between the I mean, it was all the directors that were commenting on it. But it was was it? I couldn't remember if it was the planning director, if it was really our staff that was the that was going back and forth on the agreement. I know our staff was directing it, but the last time I remember we'd send it off to all the different directors. And then that's what created the addendum for, you know, what would and wouldn't be allowed, you know? I know the the Public Works Department had the issue with, you know, whenever we do. If if the project were to go through us, Public Works would be able to require them to do a traffic study and do a bunch of different things, the road hall agreement. Because it's going through the state, we can't require them to do a road hall agreement. And I don't think FSEC was willing to allow us to put that in there. If FSEC requires a road hall agreement or whatever, or a traffic study, they'll require that of the applicant. We can't require that of the applicant. It's just reimbursement for our costs, not reimbursement for subcontractor costs of what we would usually assume. But I think we I think we still will have a fair amount of time spent on this project, especially as it moves forward. And I'd like to see see us recoup as much of that as possible.
I I don't disagree that I would like to be recouped. I just don't want to be put in a position where our FSEC is reaching out to our employees to provide plan review assistance. In other words, we're actually the ones working on this project to facilitate something that is now against county code, but we signed an agreement that we will facilitate and we will provide plan review assistance. I I'm sure we will have input from Public Works and Planning and Emergency Management and whatnot. I guess I would say my my concern is, are we signing a contract that we will provide assistance to FSEC and not we will provide assistance to our taxpayers as we go through this process? And to me, what I like the reimbursement for the ten twenty thousand dollars we potentially spend in this, because if we're not doing all of the work, the reimbursement is not going to be very high. The only reason it would be that high is if we're permitting it like we would permit it normally. Which technically we shouldn't be. That should be FSEC doing it unless we sign this agreement that says we will be providing the plan review assistance and providing the onsite inspections. And so we're signing away that we're going to be doing all the work. And that that's the big concern of mine over and above the other things that have already pointed out. I do believe we will have a hand in this, but I'm not willing to sign off our county document that we will help them facilitate this project and do the permitting of this project so that FSEC doesn't have to all for the sake of twenty thousand dollars in a reimbursement check.
I I don't think FSEC would delegate that authority to us. I don't think they would ever want us to do their permitting for them. I think this is for us to do the review of what FSEC comes up with, as well as for what the applicant is is proposing. Kind of like we've already done. We just haven't gotten reimbursed from it when we put in our comments. I think we put in the PA opinion request to the to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and they clearly said during their PA opinion request, this is just for reimbursement for the work that we do reviewing what they've come up with, not us doing the work ourselves.
Well, and I think some of the key words there, Jake, in listening is, I don't think. And that means we don't really know. And for me, with that document, it needs more definition. How big, how wide, how deep are we going to be working? And it doesn't define that, but it also limits the amount that they will get back for that. I'm not into signing something that ties us to the scope of work that changes because it's open. And then we're limited on the money we can recap. And I'm not into signing a document that says, well, let's recap something at least. I would rather look at can we redefine some things in the agreement and ask that they reconsider.
So who wants to take point on this? I know I took point on because I had the experience with regards to the networking one and put in the comments. If one of you would like to work with Rebecca in the Prosecuting Attorney's Office to define that better, I'm fully in support of it. The sooner, you know, we've we've been working on this for a while, and I don't mind working on it longer. I don't know how much work we have coming up immediately. I know we were pushing forward our own public hearings because FSEC has an hearing coming up. So if one of you thinks we can get something together or work with the PA's office and get something for next week or the week after, I think we could still get that through.
I I'll work on it and send a draft around for both of you to add comments, and then we could send it over to the PA. And I think we could get it done by the end of the week to send it back over. If that works for you, Mr.
It doesn't. It doesn't. So you can work on it and come up with comments, but we cannot comment on your comments. That would be a serial meeting.
Okay.
So technically, each commissioner can make comments and you can present them to the prosecutor, but we can't work outside of this room or comment on your comments. You can send us your comments as an advisory only. Don't respond. And that doesn't violate a serial meeting, but if we have any kind of response at all, that would. So just make sure we're careful with that.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Anderson?
Nope. I didn't ask for this. I mean, I would don't think I'll be sending in any comments because it's a reimbursement agreement. It's not an interlocal agreement. It can't tie us to do things. It's just for the work that that we perform reviewing their documents, which I thought was pretty nice for FSEC to do, because I don't think they're required to.
I also won't be submitting any comments because I've already made my decision. But if Miss Silver needs more information or the document changed to meet her liking, I'm.
Well, and I don't even know if it's a time and effort thing, if FSEC will even consider any changes to that document.
We've made multiple changes. It's I think we're on the third or fourth iteration of exactly what that was. We kept going back to our directors, asking, you know, when we thought of, you know, more issues that might.
Right. And I guess that's one of my bigger concerns, because as this document was being shared with the directors, I had multiple phone calls from directors going, are you? You really want us to sign on to this? And I'm like, well, yeah, it's just a reimbursement agreement, and they were having concerns. And then I read it, and I'm like, oh, I see where you're coming from now. So I mean, if they're concerned, and I'm some of them are concerned, and I'm concerned. It just doesn't feel right to me. And when I get red flags going off in my head, I I tend to slow down. And to me, yeah, it'd be nice to get reimbursed for the time we have in this project. But if the time this county has in this project is essentially calling into question FSEC's ruling. I'm pretty sure that's not why they're signing an agreement to reimburse us if our arguments are going to be, you can't do that. You can't do that. You can't do this. You need to do this. That that's not working and facilitating as stated in the language. So this is this to me, this reimbursement agreement is a reimbursement agreement to play ball, and and I don't want to play ball. So I won't be playing ball on this issue. And if the board so chooses, then it's the board's choice to do so. So but me, I will not.
Well, and I'll I'll commit to reaching out to FSEC staff and having some questions about their reimbursement agreement and what they see as negotiation points, or if there isn't any, then there's no point to me spending time on the.
It might. I would also encourage you to potentially reach out to some other counties that have went through the process and see if any of them have you have signed this document. And if they have, what did their document look like?
Okay.
Maybe compare. I mean, if you have that much free time in your busy schedule, I know I don't. So I mean, if we if we met to talk about this again in a month, I would have the time to do all that research. But in a week, there's no way I can reach out and get other counties' documents and see what their language is and what ours is. And you know, do I think that if we spend enough time on this, we would come up with wording that the board can get behind? Yes. But if we did that, I don't know that FSEC could get behind it because it's not going to be facilitating what they want to facilitate. So then to me, it just kind of becomes a a potential waste of time, and I have plenty of other nine million projects working.
And I can have an answer for you by the end of the week. I'll I'll go through it and do some research.
That's it. It's not like we don't have time because they haven't ruled consistency yet. They haven't ruled anything. So we don't have anything to even respond to until after April eight or August eight. So, you know, between now and August eighth, there's nothing for our staff to do. So it shouldn't necessarily need done in a week. So anything else from either of you on this topic?
For me.
Flying right along. What else do we have this morning that we can sneak into a board pending? There's one new thing on the afternoon business agenda that I will point out. The approval of the business agenda with one add-on that add-on is going under old business. So when we do the agenda, we will move that item to old business. Other than that, I don't see any changes here that I need.
You're talking about the twin bridges?
Correct.
Okay.
See, I will discuss that under old business, and we'll do that at two thirty. According to my agenda here.
I don't have anything else to add to the agenda. I would ask Commissioner Zoller, you attended the Water Conservancy Board hearing. How did that go? Or meeting, not hearing.
It was good. It was good. We had a discussion about the configuration of the Water Conservancy Board and its relationship to the county. And I committed to them to have some discussions with our auditor. It seems like there is misconception about what the board is and where it belongs, and that's been happening for quite some time. And there needs to maybe be a finite decision on that relationship of where information is housed, how meeting rooms are used. Are they a separate board from the county? So we need to cut some of those ties and make some of those separations for sure to make sure the they're separate and doing their business, and the county is separate and covers our liability. And I had some questions that I've discussed with the auditor. And so we're just moving through that process to to make their process real. And I think they appreciated that, and they moved on with their meeting, and I moved on with my work for the evening.
Thank you for the update.
Yep. Thank you for that. Just a reminder for you guys and staff. I will be leaving tomorrow for the insurance meeting up in Spokane, and I won't be back until Friday evening. So wish me well and hopes that we get a a lower increase than I expect.
Right.
It's pretty bad when you're hoping for seventeen percent increase in your insurance costs. Please only be seventeen. And any other topics for the good of the order under board pending? Don't see any. With that, before I entertain a motion, I would bring up to everybody online that we are having a retirement party downstairs at three o'clock for Miss Lee. If anybody would like to come over and attend. You're more than welcome. Nothing else. And to get to the order, I'd take a motion to adjourn for lunch.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recess for lunch.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to recess. Thank you, sir. Good catch for lunch. And be back at one o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
No different.
All right, we are live. So we will start our afternoon business meeting of the Clickit County Board of Commissioners. Let the record show all three commissioners are present, two in the chambers and one on Zoom. With that, we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone, for that. We'll move on to the business agenda. I would entertain a motion on the business agenda in that. Is he trying to find a mute button? Are you gonna do it? Oh, I can do it. I will step down as chairman and make a motion. The motion would be to approve the business agenda with one add-on that we will do under old business at two thirty, being a request for a verbal approval from the Twin Bridges Historical Museum in Lisle to amend their scope of work for their historical preservation grant, which entails painting for anybody that wants to know.
I will second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the business agenda with the one add-on. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, we are on to Commissioner Meeting Minutes. So since okay, go for it.
Chairman, I'd make a motion. A motion to approve the County Commissioner Meeting Minutes for June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from June twenty seven, twenty twenty three, a discussion on the minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of June twenty seven, twenty twenty three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are now on to citizen comments. Citizen comment is limited to three minutes at the start of your time. Please give your name and general location in the county. Yep. General location where you reside in the county. So we know, please leave your comments or make your comments pertinent to county business or things that are happening inside the county and not federal politics or any other weird things. With that, we will start in the room. Oh, I will also advise that everybody gets one time to make comments. So feel free to use your whole three minutes. If you only use two minutes, it doesn't mean you get a minute later. Each person gets one time. And then the commissioners will have a chance to respond to comments that they choose at the end at one twenty fiveish or so. With that, we'll open it up for citizen comment. We always start in the room first. We have somebody in the room that wants to come in now, or do you want to wait for a while and comment in a minute? All right, we have one come forward. Make sure those microphones are green, sir. State your name and general location for us.
My name is Anthony Rizzi. I come here today to introduce myself to the Board of County Commissioners. As a lot of you know, Don McDermott passed away several months ago. At that time, I had taken over. So I am the new chairman for the Dallasport Murdoch Community Council. And I think it was high time for me to come up here and introduce myself to you so that when we can correspond, you'll know who to throw the darts at. So anyway, but I just do appreciate being asked to fill this position, and I'm looking forward to making Dallasport Murdoch and all of Clickpot a better place to live. So that's why I just wanted to be here to say hi.
Okay, thank you, sir, and thank you for your public service, serving your community. That's always important.
You bet.
I will go online. Anybody online have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. See if I knew she was zooming in. I don't wear the tie. Get a little more close up with two of us up here. Anybody online have a citizen comment? Please unmute yourself, raise your hands. Get our attention somehow. If not, I'll go back in the room for. Okay, Kathy, Kathy's coming. What you got for us this week, ma'am?
Oh, wow. Kathy Moko Goldneal. Last Thursday afternoon, I was at three twenty minding my own business, watching TV, and the phone rang. It was the Clickit County Sheriff's Office recording telling me that I'm in a stage two evacuation for a fire. And I went, oh. So proceeded to look out the window and then drive down the street, and this is a fire that was out on Pine Forest Road. And it was amazing. I mean, the amount of fire trucks that went by in the next hour were, you know, you just heard siren after siren after siren. And then watching, there were a minimum of two helicopters with buckets. Then four matching little, they appeared to be sea planes, but they were fire, red and white fire planes. I think they land in the river, scoop the water up in the pontines and then and then these two giant planes, which I do not know what they were. Somebody said maybe retardant. Anyway.
Bigger air tankers, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, this, they were big planes, and there were two of them, and they were together. And these little planes would go over the top of my house. And a four at a time. And anyway, it was just amazing what what went on in the response. I mean, it was, and I watched, and I watched the way the wind was blowing and determined that I need not evacuate my house. But it was something else. And driving out there the next day, the look, you could see where it started on Knight Road. And then just burned through. And that was, it was really impressive, but the the response of the county, and I've heard that some of these other planes came from like Moses Lake and other places. But it was, it was, they did a really good job. Very, very neat. And we were lucky.
Yes. Yes, I will definitely have comments on that. Anybody else online have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. We can see a couple new names. I'm not seeing anybody. We'll hop back in the room. Anybody in the room right now have citizen comment? We have one online, WJ Morris. Now is a perfect time for public comments. Sir, go ahead. Are you unmuted, sir?
Yes, good afternoon. WJ Morris, Dallasport, Washington. My comment is for at least now. And I so appreciate you. I have always said this to you privately that on behalf of Clickit County taxpayers and residents, you were always valued. You provided excellent value for your paycheck to the county on behalf of all Clickit County residents and taxpayers. I always said that to you privately. And I'm going to miss you. And I think Clickit, I think, I think Clickit County residents are going to miss you too. But I want you to hit the gas and go have some fun in your retirement. I really appreciate you. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, WJ. I wish you good luck too in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
What a good public comment for today. Thank you, WJ. Anybody else in the room have public comment for the Board of Commissioners? We'll go back online. Anybody online have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? I'm not seeing it. You do have citizen comment in the room or online. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. We will be happy to take your comments. It's always nice to know what the public is thinking. Until then, I guess I'll respond to Kathy since we have, I just, there we go. Somebody popped up two six six two. Are you? Are you wishing to give public comment with phone number two six six two?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. You you say it was my turn. Yes, yes, please. So this is Tracy from Lisle, Washington. And I had a couple of questions about on the agenda today that you have on the agenda. And hopefully you can say what this is. But the parcel number in Lisle that there's a short plot on, I do not, I cannot find that where that's at on the county map or by the treasurer's parcel search. And I just wondered if you could maybe give an address or something so that I, you know, we can identify what that is. I spent quite a bit of time searching for it, and I don't know why. Maybe it's just me, but I wasn't able to find it.
And what parcel are you describing now?
Oh, I'm sorry. The one that that the short plot parcel number zero three dash one three dash one eight one two dash zero seven zero four zero zero section eighteen T one three E WM in the Lisle vicinity.
We don't have a short plot on our agenda today. We have a boundary line adjustment in the White Salmon vicinity.
Oh, this says Brandon for the Planning Department to schedule a public meeting meeting to be held in the. Oh, this says Brandon for the planning department to schedule a public meeting, meeting to be held in the board of
Got it.
County Commissioners Meeting Room.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a, yeah, it's a posting for a public hearing to be done at a later date. Uh, is what, okay, got it. Perfect. So now we're talking about, go ahead.
Yeah, do you have an address for that, for that, a piece of land?
Uh, the only address we have is what is in the packet and it's a property number, I believe.
Parcel number or a?
Yeah, I believe it's a parcel number. I don't, I would have to go back through and reread that packet to see if there's a something else.
I'm not sure.
Okay, well. Yeah, possibly you could um, email me. I did send you an email today, uh, Mr. Um, Ms. Christopher and um, maybe you could just uh, attach that information to that when you respond to the email. Um, and then
It's not in the packet itself. Yeah. So I have, I have nothing. It's just a memo that the public, uh, the planning commissioner or planning department is asking for a public hearing to be held. It's just a memo with the forms to hold the public hearing and doesn't give us any more information on it than what is actually in the consent agenda itself, which just lists the uh, parcel numbers.
Okay, but those parcel numbers, I'm unable to locate on the parcel map. Is there another way to know where that property is?
They can, uh, we have the assessor in the room. Uh, and she said she would be happy to take your phone call and she will tell you where the property is.
Okay, all right. I'll give her a call this afternoon. And hopefully that, that conversation didn't take up my three minutes because I just had a, a brief, a couple of other things.
It, it did, man, but since I had a little bit of time, I'll give you another, I talked a little bit. I'll give you about twenty seconds.
Okay, well, I might need a little longer than that, but um, okay, so the resolution, um, it says a resolution in the matter of public hearing to be held, the Board of Commissioners, uh, meeting August eighth. To consider resolution zero four two nine three. Where can a person find that resolution? I tried to search on the, the um, and the, your agenda meeting thing and I couldn't find it. And I couldn't find it online. Is there a meeting or something that that was attached to?
I would, uh, I guess I would leave it to staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but when we have that public hearing or public meeting, all those documents will be included in the packet. That will then be available to the public and the board the Thursday before the meeting.
On, on what day before the meeting? I'm sorry, Thursday before?
Yeah, we, the, the clerk always posts the packet with the agenda and all the documents. Um, you guys get it on the Thursday. I get it at the exact same time on the Thursday. Before the Tuesday meeting is when all the documents are usually posted.
Okay, and if, if you can in the, in the commenting section, maybe you could just say what that is. Um, I, I could make sense of it. Uh, for policies for providing district judicial services to municipalities that click at that. In, in um, layman's language, maybe you can um, just briefly describe what that is for.
Yeah, that was our clerk saying it's an update to county code. We currently have judicial services in place in the county, but they have not been updated or any CPI is given to them over the last, who knows how many years. So we updated the uh, fees that the jurisdictions pay for judicial services. That's the answer to that one. Uh, with that, thank you for your questions, ma'am. Um, and we will go back, let's go back in the room. I need to switch my computer or so in the room. Anybody else have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Not seeing it. We'll go back online. Anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? God, you zoom in, my head gets really shiny. Sherry, come on, Sherry. Name and general location for the record, please.
Sherry in Housam, the lady from Housam. Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate your guys' work. You've been paying attention to what is happening with uh, the state FSEC agency. And I, I, I do see what you guys are doing and how you are taking note and paying attention to details of the state agency. So I want to thank you on a local level for, for taking on the state agency task and trying to untangle it. It, I see it's quite the feat in the, I appreciate not uh, entertaining that agreement that I heard we weren't going to do right now. And we have a long way to go to untangle what's being done to our county. And um, so I, I do see what you guys are diving into and I appreciate it. Yeah, both Commissioner Christopher and Commissioner Lori, uh, I'm sorry, Zeller. So um, I noticed I said two commissioners. So in, anyway, and I would also like to publicly thank Lee. She has been a shining person and I know that we have done probably more than her like of public records requests, but she has always provided them in a quick manner and in a professional manner. And I believe that she was a great asset to our tax dollars at work in this county. She always had got her job done on a timely manner. And I, I do appreciate that and I think that she will be well missed. And I wish that our new um, uh, missile, uh, Grumbles a lot of, of, you know, luck and I hope that she feels strong and coming into this, which is, I, I could say is a very hard position in this county. I mean, this is your clerk for the, the three commissioners and this is a very important, very important position. So I, I again wanted to publicly thank um, Lee for her prompt services, her kind services, and she will be missed by me as well. And I look forward to working with Ms. Grumbles in the future. And so I, hopefully I had nice things to say today, like Kathy. Can I, I don't always want to bash things, you know, sometimes the people out here like want to talk about things we want to see done and stuff. But I did want to mention that I see what you guys are diving into and, and um, the web that has been tangled in front of you. I appreciate that. And I, I'm, I'm more than ever appreciate Lee's hard work. And I, I think she will be well missed in this county and I wish her a lot of adventures ahead. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Buske, and thank you for your very kind comments towards staff. They are much appreciated. Um, and we agree. She will be very much missed and we don't know if we're going to let her leave, but that's a separate hostage discussion that might happen later today. Um, anybody else in the room or online have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? I'm hearing none. Well, I won't end citizen comment, but I have a feeling we might have a longer board reaction than normal. So we'll start board reaction now and then in between each commissioner will also go check and see if there's anybody else up there that still wants to speak. Um, I guess I'll take the prerogative to go first and thank Mr. Rizzi for making the drive all the way up here when Zoom was plenty adequate for me, if you would have wanted to stay on Zoom this morning. Um, I do try to pay attention to who's online, even if I'm, they're not speaking. I can at least see who's watching. Uh, but it's much appreciated to come up and introduce yourself to the board for those of you, uh, people here that may not know you. Um, Kathy, yeah, that fire was kind of scary. Um, for me, anyway. Um, I look at that whole area up there in Pine, Pine Forest as a tinderbox. Um, and if that would have got into the timber and stayed into the timber, uh, we'd had some major problems. So it's, it's very nice that all the crews responded. They all have um, policies like, um, you know, at Centerville, we don't send more than two vehicles outside our jurisdiction, just so there's a fire in our jurisdiction. But it's very hard to sit back and do nothing. Um, because you're not on one of those trucks. So I said it wasn't. Um, anyway, yeah, I, I also want to thank all the firefighters that worked on that. Uh, in the emergency response crews and our employees uh, for going above and beyond and getting that thing out before it uh, created some major issues. Um, I did hear a couple of what I would concern problems with that, um, problem residents during that fire, but um, I don't want to uh, rain on the parade of all the good people that did good work on that. So, and then shortly after yours, there was a fire right over by me. So uh, over on Horseshoe Bend that had us all up in arms and concerned over there. Um, so once again, thanking our fire crews for that. Um, WJ, again, thank you for your comments again, uh, about staff retiring. We, we all agree here. She will be sorely missed. Um, Tracy, I will look at your email and uh, let you know, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. Um, Sherry, yes, thank you for your comments. Um, we all agree with you and it seems like every time we think we're getting caught up on our projects, um, new things pop up. So like with this fire, I don't know if you were on this morning with Public Works, but we, we don't have anything in place on the county level that is a policy for evacuations and where we're evacuating people to, or where they're evacuating their livestock to. And is that fairgrounds? Is that not fairgrounds? What if fairgrounds is already in lease? I don't understand how this county does not have an evacuation policy um, worked out in, in, in place, but apparently we don't. So um, yeah, that is, I think, going to be this board's, one of our top concerns moving forward. Um, to hopefully get some groundwork laid on that so we can be a little more uh, knowing what we're going to do for evacuees when and if this happens again. Um, so yes, every day is a learning day and every day add something new to our plate that we have to fit into our schedule and prioritize. And I appreciate your understanding, um, with that today, knowing that we can't get to everything every day. Um, so thank you for that. Um, with that, that is, well, I will spend my last comment thanking Ms. Lee myself. It's been fun. It's been interesting and I would appreciate, I very much appreciate that when I came in. Um, I may not have been the, the chosen candidate. I may not have been the person that the majority of even staff wanted to see. Um, I'm not putting names on you by any means for this. Um, but you know, staff tends to feel more comfortable with status quo uh, than change because change is scary. And I will, I will say you were always there. You never, you never opinionated, you never uh, had any bias, you never, um, you were always there to help and answer my questions and, and get me um, dialed in and, and without opinion or prejudice and, and that is um, it's, it's very thanked on my mind. And so, um, yeah, thank you. And that will conclude my comments. Sorry, I took up too much time. Next.
Okay, I guess you're looking at me. So yeah, thank you Kathy, uh, for your comments. Something that struck me about that too was, I don't live in Golden Dale. I work here. I live outside of Gundo. Uh, was a sense of community during that time. This is an awesome place to live and um, I saw the same thing, people running to help people, people, um, everybody assisting everybody. Whether you're a professional firefighter or on the DNR crew or where, whether you were just a community member. It, it was a very big effort and everybody went at once. And I think uh, we have to be very, very thankful that we've negotiated a deal with Department of Natural Resources and they are in Dallasport now. And they're so much closer for us. I've seen two times personally where that quick response with the air crews and their crews, I think have saved us. We haven't had a long gap in between time of helping out the local firefighters. DNR has gotten to be here quickly. So we should be very thankful for that. Um, and WJ, thank you for calling in for Lee. Uh, I have to agree. Uh, we're going to all miss Lee and uh, it's been a lot of years, Lee. Uh, I remember when you first came in and sitting behind that desk with Chris. And uh, it, it's been an amazing journey. I'd like to hear all your stories someday through all the commissioners that you've served. And you've probably seen just about everything. And uh, you always handle us very graciously, but stern sometimes. And I'm thankful for that because sometimes we really mess up. But Lee has the history in the background. She's been able to keep us on track, I think. So, and I appreciate your work with handing us our next Lee. So, and I think she's ready. You've done a good job getting her ready. And I've seen the work you've put into it. So, so. But we aren't going to let you go far. Um, yeah. And Tracy, be sure to reach out to the assessor's office. She's awesome to work with and I'm sure she can help you with that.
I just was looking up at the resolution sheet. Can't find, it's in the packet right now.
Okay.
So the resolution, Tracy, if you're still on, you were looking for the clerk says it's in the packet. You can be able to find that online with the rest of the
No, no, you're good. And I'm done. I'll hand to Jake.
Hey, uh, Jake, do you have any comments, uh, for preparation?
I always like going last. There's not a whole lot left to say since you guys do a good job, but uh, thank you, Mr. Rizzi for coming up. It's uh, it's great to put a name to a face. Uh, Kathy, thank goodness that fire didn't go any worse than it did. And to WJ and Sherry, we agree wholeheartedly. Lee has done an amazing job for this county. She has put a lot of her life's efforts into helping this county be what it is today and we all appreciate her. And uh, we invite you to the appreciation at three o'clock if you'd so choose. Uh, Ms. McHugh, and I looked up that parcel number. That parcel number is, is up off of Fisher Hill Road. Uh, make sure when you're on the parcel map, you're not, you're going to the search that allows you to search for parcel numbers, not just that other search. Um, and I would also like to note for my seatmates, that is one of those parcels that we've been hearing about uh, that Paul Letter continues to come in talking about development. That is uh, just a couple parcels away from his. And so that was something for us all. In terms of the resolution, um, yes, uh, uh, Tracy, that is uh, our district court costs. That is what the cities need to reimburse the county for providing the district court services that the county is not required to provide for municipal court services, but it saves the cities a bundle of money every year. And so we're just updating that, that policy, ensuring that the county has indemnification as well as the rates that the cities pay to adequately provide for the small portion of, of those costs. Um, and with that, sir, I would yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We do have two minutes. I will go back out citizen comment one more time. Uh, see if any members of the public have any citizen comments that they would like to uh, claim the last two minutes of our citizen commenter. Raise your hand, unmute yourself in the room or online. I'm not seeing it. But I would also echo my seatmate, Ms. Zoller's comment of um, they also correct us when we need to be corrected. I very much appreciate that. And I hope our next uh, clerk um, doesn't mind doing the same. Um, it's always been kind of an open relationship where since I can't talk to my seatmates, I can go in and talk to the clerk and brainstorm things that are going through my head or just vent. Um, and as commissioners, we need that somebody to vent to. So unfortunately, you're going to be assuming some of that mantle. Um, but I lead it, always did a very good job with that. And then also, you know, slapping us back into shape when we kind of were getting off the rails a little bit too. So that's your job now. And feeling free to interrupt us when we're getting off the rails in here. Or say, hey, turn your mic.
Commissioner Christopher, I would also, uh, because we've been talking about wildfires, uh, uh, everyone, uh, for the community and, and for my seatmates, we have our wildfire protection plans, uh, uh, countywide and then individual plans underneath it. And another thing that it's worth looking at is our comprehensive emergency management plan um, that delineates, you know, powers and resources and whatever else. Um, I, I was a part of building that CMP way back when and I always had the questions like, this is great, you know, to sit on a shelf, but where to actually send people to, you know? Um, so those discussions I think uh, are definitely valid, but it'd be great for everyone to review those before we start into this conversation on a workshop about, you know, the fairgrounds, whatnot.
Right. I agree. Um, yeah, because when I was looking through them, God, it's some time ago now. I was finding documents for continuity of government. Um, I mean, we all know that if the president gets assassinated, the vice president, you know, on the chain of who takes office, that same thing is in place here. And I thought it was kind of interesting. Um, so with that, we are done with citizen comment. Thanks, everybody for commenting today. And thanks, everybody for saying, um, and being so nice and uh, in caring today on Lee's last day. Uh, and hopefully making it a joyous and pleasant experience for her. She goes out the door uh, next week. Rules are off. You can go back to whatever you want to say. Um, with that, we will move on at one thirty for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Uh, today we have a public meeting to consider the approval of a boundary line adjustment, BLA twenty twenty-two dash nineteen in the White Salmon vicinity applicant, uh, Norris Merritt and Julie Salcino.
Hello.
And we will start with a brief staff update.
So this is for a boundary line adjustment for boundary line and BLA two zero two
And BLA two zero two two one nine. Boundary line adjustment is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero three, one zero two, three, one nine, zero five, zero two, zero zero. And zero three, one zero two, three, zero seven, zero three, zero five, zero zero off of Sterling Boulevard. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section twenty-three township three range ten. The Blamette Meridian, Clicktack County, Washington, in the White Salmon vicinity. The administrative review for this boundary line adjustment has been completed, signatures have been obtained from road health, planning and treasures office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval for BLA two zero two two one nine.
Hey, thank you for that, does, um. Do my seatmates have any questions, uh, or comments or concerns or anything on this?
I don't have any.
No, I don't either.
I don't either. I would, uh, entertain a motion unless people need me to read the motion and then I will read the motion.
I've got my glasses. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-two dash nineteen in the White Salmon vicinity.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve BLA twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Hey, do you have a comment on the addressing, um, short nets don't get addresses assigned to them at the time of a short. They, it's something that is done at the time of development.
I don't, I don't know if Tracy, if you heard that out there, apparently short plots don't get addresses. At the time of the short plot, they get addresses, physical addresses at time of development. Thank you for that educational piece of tidbit. I'll try to remember it next time, even though. There's a lot of tidbits floating around in there, so it may fall out. That makes sense to me. I know my parcels off. Because it's like you look at the boundary line and my property like goes out in the middle of the street. As opposed to following anywhere near the fence line. I mean, it's off four feet. Um, kind of scenario, but. It's a, it's a tool.
And when you check into that program, there is a disclaimer.
Right.
That it's for planning purposes only.
It is a wonderful tool for all things that I would use. Get in trouble. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing to consider amending Clicktack County Code, chapter three dot seventeen titled Open Space Tax Taxation Act. To modify the application fee for the classification of. Uh, land. Misspelling there, under chapter eighty-four dot thirty. Four and eighty-four dot thirty-three RCW and allow any interested party to comment for or against. The proposed amendments. So with that, I will declare the public hearing now open. Uh, and I will allow for a, um. The assessor to give us a brief update if she so chooses.
Thank you. Just real quick, um, through analysis, it was determined that the increasing recording costs, um, have. Um. Our current application fees are, will no longer be satisfactory in covering that cost. And staff time. So with the proposed, um, changes. Um, we have built in kind of a mechanism where the increase in recording costs every. Couple of years through legislature will, will cover that. So we would just like to, uh, make sure that our staff time is being. Um, taken care of with the minimal hundred and fifty dollar base fee for a single parcel plus fifty dollars per, um. Parcel for each additional parcel on the application, plus the current recording costs that's published by the auditor. Um, and that's my proposed.
Clarification, right now they're all lumped together and we're kind of separating, right? So worker controlling this number and then the document recording fee is a state assigned number.
Correct.
Okay. I understood it correctly. That's good. Um. With that, we will, um. Open the public hearing, uh, to public testimony both in favor and or opposed to amending the Clicktack County Code. Uh, chapter three dot seventeen, uh, or section three dot seventeen dot zero six zero. Uh, anybody in the room have public comment for or against, um, this change? Seeing none, anybody online want to have public comment on this public hearing for or against? This change to the separation of the taxing, well, what we just discussed. Still seeing none. I will give it a second in case anybody changes their mind. Um, we'll go last call. Any, any citizen comment in the room or online have public comments? Uh, for or against this change to our code? All right, we'll move on. Does the, uh, does the board have any, um, questions or clarifications of? You need the public comment that we did not get or any public, uh, already comments or questions of the assessor?
None here.
No.
All righty. I'll go one more time for, uh, public comment. Open it up for public comment one more time. Last time, anybody in the room or online have public comment? Um, for or against this proposed change? Doesn't shock me. It's pretty straightforward. So no comments for the record. Um, with that, I will, uh. Close the public, uh, hearing to further public testimony. Uh, and open it to discussion from the board. Any discussion from the board on this action at all?
Are you ready for a motion, Chairman?
Um, yeah, I don't have any, I would just say for the record that I don't have any problem with this change that the assessor is, uh, proposing. Um, it seems logical, um, especially when the. Uh, document recording fees are set by the state and kind of. Are putting us against a wall, but yes, I'm, I'm ready to entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
None for me.
Okay.
Okay. Mister, uh, Chairman, I would make a motion to approve resolution amending Clicktack County Code. Chapter three point one seven, section three point one seven zero six zero to modify the processing fees for classification of land under chapter eighty-four. Point three four and eighty-four point three three of the RCWs. From three hundred and fifty dollars of base application fee for a single parcel application plus fifty dollars for each additional parcel. In the application to a hundred and fifty dollar base application fee for a single parcel application. Plus fifty dollars for each additional parcel. Parcel in the application, plus the recording fee as published in the current fee scheduled by Clicktack County Auditor at the time of application. The resolution to amend chapter three point one seven, uh, will become effective January first, two thousand twenty-four.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve that. Uh, most eloquently worded motion to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a third out there, Mr.?
Aye.
Perfect. Um, three times charm, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for all of the documentation that you provided for our packet that makes my life easier.
Are my seatmates good with the consent agenda?
I am.
I'm good.
Yep.
So would you like a motion?
I would entertain one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with eleven items.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with eleven items. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda with eleven items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Good bills. Somewhere.
Yes.
New winner, chicken dinner.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and one dollars and thirty-six cents. For the date ending July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion on the bills? Um, I don't have any either. I looked through them once again today and they're all hunky dory. I made a few comments earlier about that, but. Um, with that, all those, uh, in favor of approving the weekly bills and the amount listed in the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. We have gorge commission updated two o'clock and they are not in the room, but I don't know if they are online and prepared to go early or. Person, got it, okay. Uh, then we have a little, little bit of time to kill until they show up unless we want to move forward with, uh. Um, the add-on, which is old business in the Twin Bridges scope of work.
Yeah, we could. Get it done.
Yeah, let's move forward.
Okay, sure, she's, she's coming around. Oh, there's some phones in the chair. If anybody was here giving public comment and left their two cell phones. Uh, on the seat, um, they might want to come forward and. Give us five dollars a piece for them.
Oh, uh, Twin Bridges Museum in Lyle. Their scope of work has changed because of, of having a contractor come in and give them a bid. It includes the paint and labor, so they just wanted to change the wording on their scope of work because that's what the bill will show. The, uh, I guess the painter buys it in bulk.
There she goes. She just ran down the stairs.
And so just wanted to get, uh, verbal. Consent to go ahead and I will submit that, uh, amendment next week on the consent agenda.
So it's just for clarification, they originally asked for the dollars to cover paint.
Yes.
And now they're asking for it to cover paint and painting for the same dollar amount.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, any, uh, any problems from my seatmates on?
No.
Allowing said change?
I'm in favor of it coming up to the consent agenda next week.
I don't have any problems to bring on the consent agenda. Am I back, is she?
No.
Oh, make her walk there.
Doesn't have her phone to get her email.
Say, I wanted to go out and scream over the rail, but that would be a little. Um, with that, for everybody online, we're just, uh, waiting around to two o'clock. We have Columbia River. Um, gorge commission executive director giving an update and our appointee to the gorge commission. Um, but they're going to be here in person at two o'clock, so when they get here, they get here and until then. Uh, we have a little bit of dead airwaves, so if you don't hear anything, that's why. But we will keep the session open unless there's something we need to talk about or discuss. Uh, she stole the green one and took. Not allowed to have that green one.
Well, I'm just looking to see. I gotta keep it organized.
Hi Billy, how are you? Crazy to see you so soon.
We should have just.
Come back anytime.
You're right, I don't need this one. This is all you.
Um, I can let my seatmates know, I had a phone call from a gentleman, um, coming back. He was coming back on Friday night from one of the events in Trout Lake and ended up hitting a cow on one forty-one. Um, there, south of the Red Barn and he was wondering why that area is open range. Um, rather than stock restricted considering, you know, that's a state highway going up there. Um, I said I had told, I had mentioned I'd bring it up to my seatmates and. It might be something we want to have a conversation with the local community council about, but. Um, I mean, most of the land in Clicktack County is open range of some sort.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've kind of always had the same question about ninety-seven coming up the grade. Um, is it's open range too? And God, the last place you want to hit cows on a state highway, but. Um, yeah, that is what the previous. Boards chose to do. Uh, and. So far, I don't know that anybody's petition for changing that.
How far down is the Red Barn from Trout Lake?
Um, it's, you know, the cutoff for Sunnyside Road.
Yeah.
Right in the area.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know, it's, it's open range all the way through Trout Lake, through the town, all the way up into the timber. Um, I remember, you know, we in the seventies, eighties and nineties, a bunch of people used to arrange cattle up there on the Forest Service ground, but I don't know about it anymore. Um. I don't know how the, the farmers, you know, in Trout Lake would feel about making that a stock restricted area, you know? And a lot of that comes down to liability. If you hit a cow, who's liable for the accident? Um. So.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Long conversation with him.
I think that would be the same question. With the ninety-seven is whose cows getting hit and? Who's liable is essentially the reason why those stock restrictions went into effect when they went into effect. So it, it would definitely be some very interesting. Uh, vocal. Um, meetings. Yeah, I would say it happens over here. Once every two or three years on, uh, the curve seven ninety-seven.
Really?
Yeah.
Um, the, the other one is, uh, I don't know if my seatmates got, but we have an application for the nuisance board of appeals. And I forgot to add it to the agenda. Um, I believe we only have one applicant from district one. Um, nobody else that I contacted filled out an application. Um, if you guys would be, it would entertain, I wouldn't mind putting, uh, for the consent agenda next week, the appointment of. Uh, Joanna Turner for the nuisance board of appeals.
Um, I guess my answer is it's your district and your appointment, sir. Uh, and I respect your choices. Um, with that, I would also add that I think she's fully qualified and capable of doing the job. The only concern I had was, um. That attendance would be. Um, hard if we didn't do it electronically. Um. And I, I just. I guess I'd say it's hard for me because I think if you're hearing public testimony, it's much. It's much more powerful and genuine in person than it is electronically, but we shouldn't let someone's location. Um. Hinder whether they should be able to serve on a board or not, but that, that was one of my kind of concerns with that, but technically. Uh, for the record, I have absolutely zero problems with the appointment you're, uh. You're recommending.
And I agree, and I would encourage her to try to. You know, I don't think they meet very often, but if that changes to try to. Uh, do a few of those in person if she can. It's a whole different working experience to get to know your seatmates and to work with them in person. And to take the public testimony.
That's me. I, I can't imagine there's going to be more than one, maybe two days a year, so if, if she can drive, I really would love to see that, but if she can't.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we still need. Um, diverse. Uh, a diverse board and this really sets up a diverse board, so I totally understand if she can't.
And, uh, and I would just mention that, you know, uh, I've, I expect that the nuisance board of appeals, um, would have. Those hearings on Zoom so that maybe the person who makes the appeal can still testify if they don't have the means or method to drive, so. Uh, while I agree, it's always great to be in person, um, it's a brand new world.
Yeah, it's just hard to teach us old dogs new tricks. Yep, I look forward to seeing that on the agenda next week, sir, for their consent agenda. With that, if anybody out there listening wants to. With that, if anybody out there listening wants to sign up to be on one of our many citizen advisory boards. Uh, the applications are online along with all the boards and what they do and. Um, throw your name into the hat. All right, I think all these are signed. If you would like to pass them on so they can.
Sure.
Double check. Did it again.
Thank you.
We did it again. Effect document. All right, I'm gonna let you. Have the option. I'll place on the first page. I forgot without, but no. Give you the option to do whatever you want to do with yours.
Thank you. It's not the first few pages.
I did this once before and decided to change the signature sheet, but. Alrighty, beat the Buddha judge. Seems like once a week we're sending a letter for the bridge. To somebody.
I can let everyone know, I just got an email that, um, it looks like Senator, oh, now I forgot.
Uh. Congressman.
Uh, Senator Merkley's office is going to move forward with four million dollars as well and, uh, congressionally directed spending. Um, so between Dan Newhouse and Merkley, I don't know if that's eight or if that just guarantees us the four. So I've got an email out on that. Um, I was hoping to have an answer. Uh, but either way, that's, uh, that's four million dollars that we don't have to pay locally and that's four million dollars of total increases. We don't have to put forward.
Well, hopefully it's four and four because it'd be nice to see Oregon get closer to matching what Washington's already done.
I mean, technically speaking, Oregon put twenty million towards the bridge this, but this by any in Washington only put fifteen, so. Um, in terms of cash, cash moving forward, Oregon, Oregon's ahead so far.
Right, but I, I'm, I'm looking at, um. I guess, or they say what they've pledged.
Um, yes, uh, Oregon, Washington also had a transportation package that we're all paying for right now in our new gas tax prices that. Uh, makes a big difference. Oregon put that out of their lottery dollars, so. Um, hopefully twenty twenty-five, we will get that big transportation package out of Oregon that will make up all the difference. Right. When Washington still has to come up with fifty million dollars more that wasn't included in the transportation package. Um, so that's, uh, uh, way to go Oregon, way to go, uh, Senator, uh, Merkley and Newhouse. Uh, we're, we're moving ahead. These are not insignificant dollars and they're, uh, it's setting us up for success when we go through the. Uh, big dollars, um, for the federal grant. Um, so.
Which is the letter to, uh, Pete Buddha Judge today? So.
I think that's, I think that's technically for another one we're going for, and we've got another grant where we're looking to submit here shortly as well. Um, so there's, there's a lot of different dollars coming, uh, especially with the multimodal grants. So, uh, with the three million dollar grant we just received, hopefully that will line us up for hopefully what I would, I would hope a twenty-five or fifty million dollar grant for. That bike, uh, bike, um, ped lane. Because, you know, that's a fifty million dollar cost on that bridge. Thereabouts approximately.
Is there any chance that that bridge gets built without a bicycle ped lane?
Uh, not if you want to have any grant dollars.
That's what I thought. Cause I'm getting, um. Concerned citizens complaining of why we're spending fifteen million on a bike ped lane. Um, which I. Don't necessarily disagree with them. Uh, but yeah, if you want federal money, you're building everything as a toll bridge and you're building everything with a bike ped lane. And that's what you get to get federal money in the ways my understanding, so. Um, price of doing business.
Yeah, well, and the other good thing about it is, is right now it's designed to be at a size that the bike ped lane could be made smaller, either to save costs. Or it could be made smaller so that we get a third lane thirty or forty years in the future if we ever need it.
We, uh, we have everybody here now, I think. Are you guys have everybody you need? For your, okay, perfect. We will start two minutes early then. Uh, next item up is a two o'clock is scheduled for miscellaneous reports. It is the Columbia River Gorge Commission. Um, executive director, and I'm gonna butcher your name, so I'm gonna talk very slowly. Until you can get to the mic and help me with the. Last name, I'm still talking slowly.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Christina Volnyakovsky, executive director of the Columbia River Gorge Commission.
And good afternoon.
Only a Kowski.
Volnyakovsky. The W is like a V.
I'm gonna apologize every time we go forward.
Christina is fine.
Christina, perfect. Thank you. I'll be Dan. We're perfect. And go ahead.
Uh, Chair Christopher and Commissioners, uh, Zola and Anderson, thanks for your invitation for us here today. I'm Valerie Fowler, your representative as your commissioner, um, on. The gorge commission and, uh, it's delightful to be back, especially on a day where we're all celebrating Lee's, uh, retirement. Um, oh my goodness gracious, how you let that happen is beyond me. Um, she's just been a delight to work within a very short period of time, and I know she will be well succeeded. Um. Uh, by her, uh, wonderful deputy, if I've got that positioning right. But thank you very much for inviting us back. As you will recall, um, I've had the opportunity now to participate virtually in two gorge commission meetings in April and June. And in person in May, and the May, um, was an absolute highlight because I got to meet the commissioners that I hadn't, um, had the opportunity, most of them. One was not present, was present, but virtually, um, that I hadn't had a chance to meet yet and, um, start to form. A rapport across the commission, um, because I think we're all most effective when we are working. Um, I together to support the, the intent and spirit of the National Scenic Act. Um, I don't have much to brief today because, uh, which is good news because we don't have, um, any, uh, intangible. Um, issues with, uh, that relate to Click attack county. Um, and we'd like to keep it that way as, um, as, as much as possible. Um, but it has been, um, fun to get going and really realize, um. Uh, what it's like to be on the, um, the listening side of the table, um, you know it very well, um, listening and learning. And I see that as what I've spent the last few months doing since I saw you, um, the last time. So we look, I look forward to joining Christina and yes, I just called Christina Christina too, because the same reason. Um, I look forward to joining Christina to speak with you as often as you'd like to see us because we do very much want to keep that communication. Um, going, uh, between the county commissioners and the gorge commission. So with that, I, we're not sure what you're going to ask, so I'll turn the microphone back over to Christina.
Thank you, Commissioner Fowler. And, uh, Chair Christopher and Commissioner Zoller, it's really a pleasure to be here, especially wanted to be here in July in order to say a heartfelt thank you to Lee. And, uh, for facilitating all of our, um, updates over the years. Uh, this is now eight and a half years that I've been at the gorge commission as executive director. And, uh, and so every time there was a scheduling, which was pretty much quarterly, uh, first with, um. Like Carl McNew and then with Sandra Clark. And so we always looked forward to come out, coming up here and talking with you and giving you an update of what we're doing in Click tech county. So I just have a couple of updates for you, uh, that as, uh, Commissioner Fowler said, we don't really have a lot to report at this point. It's kind of a quiet time at the gorge commission, uh, which is good. Uh, but also, uh, it's a quiet time because we are a little bit staff challenged. The good news is that Bryce Guskey, who is the Click tech county planner on our staff. Uh, he was just on a four month parental leave because he had his first child Fletcher, um, son. Um, and in the meantime, his work was getting covered by one of our other, um. Planners, uh, Joanna Kaiserman, but then as soon as Bryce came back, uh, last week, then Joanna went out on, um. Parental leave, so she's out now for.
They coordinate their, their stuff, that's.
They did, actually they're planners and I. And then the planner before that was Jessica Olson, she was our natural resources planner and she was out four months before. Bryce went out and so Bryce was covering some of her work. And, uh.
Mess if they were all gone at the same time.
Yeah, so that's why I was very thankful that they at least, you know, sequenced their starting of their families. Yeah. But, uh, so the good news is that Bryce is back now pretty much full time starting this week. And, uh, when I reviewed his workload on Click tech county permits, he, uh, he's pretty much right on top of it where. We only have about four outstanding permits that we're just waiting for some cultural resources surveys to be completed. And then those were permits should be issued sometime this summer. So we're doing pretty well in terms of, uh, having cleaned up the backlog over the years of the permits that had been pending. Um. I'm trying to think if there are anything, anything else related to the permits. Yeah, I think we're, we're really in pretty good shape for Click tech county permitting. Um, on a larger basis, we have, um. We just finished our budget cycle and we are very appreciative that Washington state essentially, uh, approved funding for. You know, continuing our operations, of course, but then also a couple of additional decision packages. Uh, however, Oregon did not match them, so the good news is that Washington separately funds the Click attack county position. For the planner position, so it doesn't matter, it doesn't require any kind of match from. From, uh, Oregon, so that was great that we're, we're good for another two years there. The, uh, Oregon budget, uh, is pretty much just continuing the current service level to keep us at about, uh, seven staff. And then Bryce is our eighth staff person. So in terms of by state staff, we just have seven positions that are approved. Uh, but the good news though is that they did approve the, uh, what's called an access database replacement project. And, uh, for the first two years, we were looking at how do we replace our entire database that's like fifteen years old? And as I had told the legislature, that database is so, um. Inoperable that it's like trying to text from a rotary phone, you just, it just doesn't have any functionality. It wasn't connected to our GIS, uh, services. Uh, every, we had to do everything manually, so anytime we would get permits, whether it's Click attack county or reviewing the other five counties. Uh, everything had to be entered manually. And so if you went to our website and you wanted to look something up, it was pretty cumbersome to do that. So we just spent the last two years figuring out what kind of configuration we need. How do we actually get into the modern technology era? And most importantly, how do we make our permit system online? So that once this new database is going to be implemented in the next two years. Uh, then if we have any Click attack county residents who want to build in the scenic area, all they have to do is go online. They can fill out the application. It populates our database automatically. Uh, our staff reports are going to be. Uh, much, uh, much more, not really automated because we still need to do all the analysis, of course, to, uh. To meet the management plan requirements, but it's going to be a lot more user friendly. And the data, uh, we can also, uh, provide data and populate from the other counties. So if a commissioner like Commissioner Fowler wants to know what are the trends in the national scenic area about building or what about ag land? You know, uh, what about how many new homes are being approved? There is a way of actually querying that and having it linked directly with our GIS system. So that, uh, it'll be very user friendly. Uh, it'll be much easier on us, but it'll also be, uh, much more public facing and, uh, interactive. So we're very excited about getting that over the finish line and both Oregon and Washington did prove that. And they also approved, uh. A halftime GIS position. Uh, our GIS position that we have now, his name is Mike Schrankel. He is only a halftime GIS. And so, you know, everything is GIS, everything we have to do has to be related to land use planning and mapping. And so we were able to convince the legislatures, both Oregon and Washington, to allow us to, uh, increase that halftime position to a full time position. So I was very happy that both states approved that, uh, that funding. But it still keeps us set about, uh, se- now it's seven and a half positions that are by state plus the one click attack county position. They did not fund, uh, climate change planner for us. We spent the last two years collaborating with all the counties. Uh, with cities, with the four tribes, as well as all of the stakeholders. And, uh, finalized a climate change action plan that I may have mentioned to you in the, in the past. But, uh, in order to actually implement that plan and continue working with communities to look at, uh, adaptation and mitigation measures. That, uh, it really requires a person to be able to do that and that position was not funded. So, uh, Washington approved it, but, uh, Oregon did not. So we'll see how we can get some of that work done. We'll just have to rely on our partners a little bit more on that. But if you would like to have more information about the climate change action plan and what was approved by the gorge commission. Uh, it's non-regulatory, it's, uh, really just pretty much, um. Guidelines of what can be done in the future with resource protection, but also with mitigation of greenhouse gases. I'm happy to make that presentation to you in the next, uh, in our next update.
Yeah, you're sorry, get closer to my mic. Um, I do have a question. What, did you mention how much the new software system you're doing is going to cost?
Yes, the vendors, well, there's a couple of different components. Uh, the, uh. It's about one point eight million dollars. But the actual software part of it, because there's project management. There's our staff costs and then there's, uh, the vendor and we just last week picked the vendor. That is going to be doing the implementation and that's probably close to three hundred thousand to get that. It, it's about a two-year project.
Yeah, I, I figured about as much. We're going through a little bit of the same. So yeah, that was kind of what I was throwing out there. Um, no, I think that'll actually be a. A big help for you guys, but also a big help for the citizens. Uh, for ease of applying and maybe checking on where their status is online.
Yep.
Um, technology is a good thing I keep trying to explain to people around here. And that we might want to actually get into the technology era, but, uh, sounds like you guys are doing well with that.
Well, we had a, it, we had probably a little bit more of a complicated situation because we were both. Uh, because we're by state, we had oversight by the Washington office of the chief information office of OCIO. And OFM. And then we also had oversight by the Oregon, uh, enterprise information services. And so every month for two years, we were meeting and going through everything because it's a gated process. And I don't know if, if the technology project that you're referring to, Mister Chair, has to go through the gated process through the state. But it's, it's a fun process and, uh, they were very helpful to us. I'm not an IT person, but. Um, had to lead this project and it was, it was great. We had so much help from the state. And if, uh, if your technology people ever want to talk to, uh, myself or Mike Schrankel, who's our project manager. We'd be happy to because we've, there have been a lot of lessons learned on how, what you do and what you don't do when you're trying to do technology. Um. A whole conversion process because we, uh, we had to digitize thirty-five years of information in our file cabinets. Scanning galore and, uh, and how we're going to actually be able to get all that. Um, converted into the new database. Converted into the new database is going to be a challenge, but we're very excited that when I'm gonna sit here in front of you in a couple of years. Be able to do a demonstration of how easy it's going to be to apply for permits and get information that you need.
I like that part, because right now we're going upgrading our financial software and I'm trying to get convinced. The importance of the database and the searchable and upgrading that function. Except after what you just said, you might have scared everybody away, so.
In terms of.
It's cheap and easy, don't worry about.
No, we found the gating process to be very, very helpful, actually, so. They were very, very supportive.
I know it's gonna be a lot of work, but in the long term, it's gonna be beneficial for both the employees of the county and the citizens of the county. It's just a matter of taking on the workload and doing the work and, and not kicking the can down the road anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To say it'll really enhance transparency too, on the process. And having gone through the application process myself a few years back, um. I know it's awfully hard to draw a map of exactly where you want your home to be, for example, especially when you're moving it a little bit by a little bit. And so if you can just take it, the GIS and just plant it, the little design on a map that it's very clear to everybody. Um, who has any interest in the matter, and so it's gonna be, it's gonna be game-changing in terms of, as you said, Chair, the citizens. And the, um, their ability to, um, really convey what they're trying to request and, um, then follow the process through.
Yeah, no, that's good. Uh, only other question I had was, you said your climate action plan, they didn't. Uh, the Oregon didn't cover an employee, so you're gonna have outside vendors working this or something like that?
No, we don't have any.
Or somebody else, since you didn't have employee, you were talking about somebody else. What, what is that somebody else and what are we talking there?
Hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm sorry if I wasn't really clear. So in order to implement it, we need to have like a staff person that will do that and. We were borrowing between all of our existing staff to even just write the plan, but, um. We have to look at that plan now through a different lens of how much of it can be implemented by partners. As opposed to by the Gorge Commission, so it's, like I said, it's non-regulatory, it's all voluntary work. Uh, so if there are partners, whether it's a local county or a local city or, uh, different conservation groups. Or, uh, McEd, for example, I mean, there are different aspects of it that could be, uh, parsed out to different entities. And then see if they're interested in, in doing that work without our supervision, because we just don't have. You, you really need a body to be able to do that work. I'm still going to try to get that position funded through maybe short session. Uh, because there are so many people that are relying on our input. That I'm not really sure how we're gonna do it, but, uh, at this point, it's, it just means that we're slowing down the implementation until we can figure out. How to take a stepwise approach to move forward.
For my only questions, do, do my seatmates have questions?
As that plan, um. Kind of rests for a while till you move forward, you have an idea that you may update it little by little as you go, rather than wait. A couple of years, three years and then try to update it, where you try with staff to keep it kind of current.
Yes, uh, what we have in the plan are different timelines and goals. We, we drew out a roadmap. If we had a full-time position, what all the different steps are going to be moving forward in the next two years, five years, ten years. But it's very adaptable, because it's not regulatory and it doesn't require policy changes. Per se, right now, if there's any adjustments that need to be made, we can do those with the Gorge Commission's approval. So, um, however, there are some things that might require a policy change in the future. And if that is identified, then it'll become part of the next management plan review process. So, uh, we are gonna slow it down, but one thing that we did commit to is that on a quarterly basis. We are providing an update to our Commissioners on where we are with the climate change plan. You know, and we created something called a dashboard where we identify, you know, basically what the goals are. What this, what the current accomplishments are and then what the next steps are, and it's really just at a glance. And that's what I would probably share with you at the next meeting. Uh, and if we don't make much progress, then it's going to be pretty much the same the next quarter. But our goal is to try to figure out, how do we, uh, how do we not make this just a plan that lives on the shelf? Uh, that was the whole intent, was that it be actionable and that, uh, very partner-driven.
Listening to you, you're so similar to us, so don't ever feel alone, uh, the IT issues, all very similar to us. And also the family leave, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, but it's a new journey for employment. Or filling the gaps.
It is, it's definitely, uh, wonderful, especially since I have all younger planners who are starting their families. And, uh, it's the benefit that Washington provides for supporting both, um, mothers and fathers is. It's really very impressive and it makes for happier employees and, you know, rich, long-term retention. Uh, in the short run though, it's a little bit challenging, you know, to cover the workload. So if we are a little bit behind on something, we hope people understand that and are patient. But, uh, we're very happy for, for people that have the opportunity to take advantage of that, um, parental leave.
Have you read more than you have for years, Val?
I, I, I'm familiar with, um, sort of bureaucraties from my past, um, but, uh, I'm now, uh, I have. Worked my way through what you would call two and a half inches of a Commissioner handbook and then the background. Um, some of it was, uh, familiar to me beforehand, of course, um, uh, not only studying up, but also, um, going through the process several times. Um, from the other side of the table, as one of the Commissioners referred to it, um, but yes, it's, uh. There is a certain way that things like scenic acts are written that is all too familiar for me. And, um, it definitely requires, um, coffee before, um, starting. So, yeah, it's been, it's been very much.
Your Red Bull.
Red Bull would, that might be too much for me, but it's, um, it's been great getting up to speed. It's a lot to learn, um, and frankly, who would want a job if you can figure it all out in a few weeks, right? Because then you'd be bored the rest of the time, so.
That's awesome. I'm glad you're enjoying it. Jake too.
Easy job sounds kind of good right now, I, I don't know. Years that step forward to sit on these boards that, like yours, isn't like super time-consuming. But you need to be able to do your homework, you don't just get to show up on day one and just make willy-nilly votes. You, you have to put your time in for citizens to care enough about their county and their communities, uh, to get involved. It's a pleasure for us to have people like you sit on these boards. I believe Commissioner Anderson had something that I might have walked on it when he was speaking, so.
Well, that's all right, don't worry about it. I just wanted to say thank you again, Valerie, for showing up and being a part of the board, um, and for the update today from you both.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to see you all again, two in person and one virtually.
Yes, thank you very much, and I, I do want to say a very heartfelt thank you for selecting Commissioner Fowler. Because, uh, it's. She does her homework and has lots of questions and as the Executive Director. Um, I always appreciate a very responsive Commissioner, so it's, uh, it's my pleasure to, um. Share the four hundred and eighty pages of the management plan and walk her through everything. But, uh, all the way up here, we were talking about different scenarios and different issues that have come up and, uh. And so I'm very appreciative that you selected her to be on our commission and help us out.
Perfect, and I would like to thank you as well, because it's come to my attention. That you've met with one of the citizens of Goldendale and even came up here and had lunch with them a week or so ago. To discuss their questions with the, the Gorge Commission too, so thank you for reaching out to people that aren't even necessarily in. The scenic area, uh, in helping them with questions they have, so.
Well, we're interdependent with each other between the county and the scenic area, we're all one community, so anything I can do to help, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anything else from my seatmates? No?
Nothing here.
No, perfect, thank you guys, if you don't have anything else from us, if you do, just holler.
Okay.
Always holler, other than that, keep going.
Thank you so much for the opportunity today and congratulations again.
Yes, congratulations, Lee, we'll all miss you. No doubt, no doubt.
She'll be here next Tuesday for citizen comment with a bag of, take, rosen, rotten tomatoes. It's my turn, she sits in the audience.
What I've wanted to say for so many years is.
I say, she could probably write a book and we'd all buy it at this point.
Or buy it out before it goes into. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
If you don't have to be somewhere else either, you're always welcome to stay downstairs and.
I saw it on the great board that you all have downstairs for three o'clock. That's really nice, it also tells you the temperature and, you know, um, the date and everything.
Reminds me what I'm doing. Yeah.
Helps me when I walk past a room and there's a meeting, I'm like, what are they doing in there? Oh, okay, I get it now.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
See you, thank you.
Um, next up, we are off into board pending, are any issues by the board that, um. We think are pertinent for this meeting. I always forget until five minutes after the meeting's over, what I wanted to discuss, and then I have to wait a week and then I forget the next week too.
I just have one thing, um, I know you're heading off, Dan, uh, tomorrow. So thank you for spending the next three years doing something I'd rather never do.
Three years?
Yeah, you heard what I said there.
I actually kind of enjoy that insurance board, because I like to play on the minutia of numbers.
And, uh, but, uh, for Lori, I don't know if you have anything tomorrow, but, um, I got invited on the Lupin Community Forest. Um, trip and I didn't see your email address, uh, included, so I want to make sure you got that invite. It's a good group of people, um, to get to know, um, especially the, the loop inside the Conservation Fund Group. But what I'm seeing is, is it's gonna be a great trip, it looks like.
I saw that and.
I was gonna say, I think we were all included, I was thinking about going, but then I'm gone, so. I'm gonna miss the Goldendale Reds meeting tomorrow too.
I had a couple of the meetings, let me see if I can rearrange a little bit for them and then make sure I'm back in time for a Clicktack evening meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, sometimes it's best to just go to the stops that you, you want, you see. To cut out all the, the minutia of the beginnings for those things.
Okay.
I, I did see they had an itinerary out that, uh, each stop was here at this time and.
Oh, sweet.
Whatnot was part of that email, so you could, technically, you could catch up or.
Okay.
Not carpool, because they're all meeting at the fire hall at the beginning, so if you don't carpool, you can cut out early too, so.
And I think they all pretty much overlook your home too, where they've been doing a lot of that work is just up on top of the hill.
Yeah, above O'Kaikas, and I could fit probably a couple of stops in and go back to my other things, maybe. But thank you.
Um, I think everything else I mentioned this morning. That I had on my list.
Uh, just got an email from Rob.
It's in the back.
Trying to figure out which one that was. Yeah, I'll, I'll figure it out on the off, offline.
That was for the, um. I, if I, if it was the same one I got, it was for, um, interviewing the candidates.
Right, I just didn't know which candidate that was of the two. In my brain, I'll have to go back and look at the list to figure out which. Which one it was. That's all I have, anybody else has anything? If not, we will, um. We don't have any workshops this week, we don't have any radio this week, right?
We have radio on Thursday, eight oh five, it says.
Oh. How am I gonna do that? I guess I can try to call in from up there and step out.
Me.
So put me as a maybe call in on the phone and maybe not call in on the phone. Number should be on.
Are you gonna try to call in Jake? For radio?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
The number's on the calendar.
Okay.
So just call in from home and we'll just kind of go that route, but. Yeah, forgot about that, I will try to do that, so.
Or I might be up here.
That's all I have, if anybody else doesn't have anything, um, staff have anything? No, no, Rob's here, does, you don't have anything? No? All right, I would entertain a motion if we have no further business.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, and Glenn for watching today.
Have fun at the retirement party, everyone.
I'm gonna eat your cake.
You can have all the cake in the world, I don't like it.
I'll leave a piece of your desk.